Borough City Commission to order start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should make sure that it's worked because I had a lot of complaints last week about static. So let's try and make sure that's.
This one's working.
Yeah, problems as we go, we should address them because there were some people very happy. Were you listening to it?
I at home, I could, there was so much that I couldn't hear because of the static.
That's what Sarah said too.
Try to get back on keeping it live.
Hopefully it stays that way.
It stays that way.
Mine's off still.
Yours is off. That's one way we can isolate it is by shutting everybody off when they're not talking.
Okay.
I don't know, I can kind of hear if you can't hear, you can be turned up. I can kind of hear the audio.
Oh, there it goes. I think he picked it up.
Is Sarah watching? Check that audio.
Probably. She messaged me a little bit ago also.
Sometime my wife watches, sometime she doesn't.
Paul talking.
Paul talking? Want somebody to keep talking, you said? Oh, I thought you wanted me to quit talking. I don't hear anything from you.
I don't either.
Is it on?
It was, unless I got dead battery again, which I usually do.
Paul, Sarah said yes, she's watching.
We go Sarah's side.
She goes, I'm watching.
How many fingers am I holding up?
Just one.
That's how many she's holding up.
I hear y'all.
I hear y'all. Hear y'all? It's been a long ways away for Christmas.
Oh yeah, my battery is going dead.
Battery, you gotta have a battery pair.
Look at that, everyone's really this year.
Sacrifice that everybody pointing to me.
We have things too.
Two?
Yeah. Mine likes to go dead a lot.
Is there not here, is there a cord? Is there anything on here?
They're dead, they're dead.
Oh fuck, just shut off.
Yeah.
Well, it's not me.
Mine's off.
Okay, go ahead and get started with the minutes from the last meeting and then the special commission meeting on the 28th.
I'll make a motion, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Mike.
I just want to make sure you ask for anything because I just want to make sure we put the amount or what we transferred out of the emergency fund, the dollar amount, if you can put, they can put that in the minutes.
Um, I had her fix that because I caught that and so it is in the official, it is in the official ones. I had her change that this morning because I caught that, yep.
Sorry for the interruption.
And then we should probably add in the Christmas gift what the actual amount was.
Oh, that probably not good.
I don't know at the time, they didn't know.
Do you know how much it was?
Uh, I think it's, I asked Julie too, I don't remember off the top of my head, it's either 25 or 75, I think. I'll ask.
Isn't there a check? I thought I saw a check somewhere.
What's wrong with?
Almost 250 divided by.
Nine.
Twenty-five. All right, next item is the presentation of the bills. Oh, sorry. Is there any other changes to the agendas? If not, do I have all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying aye? Motion carries. Next is the presentation of the bills. The only thing that I've seen is 69906 to. Brad Robb, extra meeting. That should came out of water, not the municipal infrastructure fund.
She asked me about that too and I told her out of water.
So just make sure that that gets changed.
Okay. Change for the, or change.
Is there any other questions for the bills? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
So.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Question reports. Nicole, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to report.
Dave?
Yes, I have. Uh, this is regarding the bridge in Woodland Park. Did you guys see my emails that I sent you regarding that? The Trail County Commission has chosen to team up with us in regards to applying for a grant for the bridge. And there's two different categories, there's uh, there are two different funds, I should say, and if we are granted the grant. There is 100% which would cover the complete cost of the bridge. And the second fund, we would be responsible for 10% of the, the cost. Now, I don't know when that, first thing, first thing that's gonna be done is um, my thoughts here, I got, been looking at this information so much today that um, KLJ, if we get approved for the grant, KLJ Engineering will go in and they'll get a, they will do a survey of the bridge and figure out what it's gonna cost to replace it. And then that will be turned in to the North to go to DOT.
They don't need a cost by the time?
No. Because there's no cap on the, on the funding. So it's, it's whatever if it's uh, you know, whatever it costs, but uh, so we could get it paid 100% or it could cost us 10%. And what I need tonight is from the commission is we need to make a decision and a motion if we're going to join Trail County in applying for the grant.
Any questions for Dave on that? Maybe I have a motion then for that.
I'll make a motion, move ahead with that.
Mike makes the motion for approval to move ahead with the two grants trying to work with partnership with Trail County. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion?
Is there a timeline on that law?
As far as, oh, uh, it, it has to be in by the 18th of this month.
When do they, when do they know?
That's, that's, we might not find anything out until 24, possibly 25. Could be sooner than that, but that's just what they're, the information they're giving to me. And County and the engineering firm, they will take care of all the paperwork. I think there's some paperwork that the city is gonna have to sign, but it will be getting back to me. JR, is there anything that you know of that we need to be doing?
Rick, do you have a question?
Yeah, I couldn't hardly hear you Dave, but is that gonna cover the grants you talked about, you said cover the bridge? Is that removing, replacing a bridge? What about engineering fees? Does that all fall under that grant?
I can't answer.
What's, what's the grant involved with before anybody votes on it?
Well, I'm sure it will. I, I can definitely answer that, you know, to the best of my knowledge, but I just, I, I can find out and let you know.
No, I, no, I'm just curious like, you know, with the engineering fee?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Seems like every time you turn around, that engineering fee is going up, you know?
Yeah.
And uh, if it's removing, replacing, or what are you guys voting on, you know? I'm, I'm just curious.
We don't know yet, do we?
Well.
But we're just voting to, to.
We're voting for the grant right now.
To buy for the grant.
I, I realize it's a grant, but I'm asking if he knew what the grant consists of.
Well, the grant is for, is for removal of the bridge and removal and replace is what the grant would be. We, we could go for, we could apply for a grant to renovate it, but the engineer said you could do that, but then you're just bandaging up.
That, that's a 30 something year.
1934.
34 bridge, yeah.
So.
I'm just curious as to, you know, what it, what it consists of, that grant.
Yeah. And, and he, and like I put in the email to these guys too, I said, even if we're, even if we're stuck with 10%, you know, but down the road, if we have to replace that bridge at the whole cost, even 10% would be a heck of a good deal for the city. It's just, you know, you gotta say we're finding the funds for that.
I'm just, just curious.
Yep, no, if you have any more questions on it, just.
Yeah, I'm just curious what it consists of.
But I can find out, I can actually get an itemized of what the whole grant pays for.
Well, definitely that, I think that bridge is uplifted its usefulness.
And I've got the, I've got the, I'll pass this around, this is the current inspection report. It's in tough shape underneath. It's uh, it's also, it's, it's not ADA compliant. So if, if we put a new bridge, it's gonna have different walkways and so.
Could, could they raise it up?
I'm assuming they would, yeah. I would assume they would.
Raise it up?
Yeah, I know why they wouldn't.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you get a chance to follow up on the snow removal?
That graph is showing different people that have inspected.
And it looks like we've went down at least two in the last few years, so. 98, we must have fixed it again and then in 2008, it started dropping down again. In 18, somebody must have just judged it wrong. Went down and then back up.
You're from a different spot.
And the only other thing I have, I don't know if.
We have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion on bridge? Paul? Yes, Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me? All right, what else do you have?
Uh, I guess the county declared a snow emergency today. I don't know if we've fallen any of that category or not as far as recouping. Any overtime or fuel costs or anything like that.
We'd have to get, well, we did declare it at the last meeting. And then we moved those funds from the emergency fund over, so it would have to be if the governor or FEMA would declare something that we can come back and get, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we followed suit with the colony or what.
No, we ended that at the last meeting.
Okay, that's all I have though.
Thanks Dave. Mike?
Nothing, I.
Paul?
Uh, nothing on the beautification, I don't know, you might have something nearby, I think you had some stuff cut up. On HEDC, uh, there wasn't, they, they weren't able to get a quorum for the meeting, so they didn't have a meeting last month. Uh, I failed to say that they did, Gary Neesman has been the president or the chair for the HEDC for a while. He served his time and he's off now and the new, the new chair is Terry Sando on the HEDC. And he's, they'll have their first meeting in January, hopefully, whether it's a meeting. Uh, electrical side, I don't know, Jim, do you know on load controls, how that's going, where we're at? The reason I'm asking is do we need to do a little PR, do we need to get out and push this, remind people to get this stuff in?
I read into him the other day, he said it's, it's getting better, it's steady with, with calls and scheduling. Did he have an exact count? He didn't, I'm gonna say between 200 and 300 out of uh, 700 we have installed, so he's picking away, he's, you know, between the holidays and the weather, I suppose, he hasn't got a lot done in his last few weeks, but.
If he just let us know if this is kind of, if he says it's kind of slowing down, that we maybe need to push something out on, you know, on social media or something to remind people to do that, so. And uh, thank you. And then uh, we'll be meeting, we'll have a meeting on with Missouri River in January here, just before the next meeting on the maintenance and things like that, however, what we can do as far as a cooperative effort between the communities, that's on January 17th, so. Uh, Jim has been very proactive in finding different ways that we can kind of take care of our maintenance issues and emergency issues altogether, so, so he's got more than one option to deal with, so. Thanks Jim for doing that. I know it's 20 broad, it's pretty important to have. Make sure we got enough people to get electricity back on if we have a problem, so, thanks for doing that. But that, that'll be, that'll be, be certain one more issue, uh, one more thing on the maintenance side with Missouri River at that time. There's not, nothing that's set in stone yet, we're just reviewing our options on what we can do moving forward in the future. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything different than what will be on the agenda. Jim, do you have anything tonight?
Um, we're just going through the typical winter stuff, we're cleaning more spots, snow removal, working on equipment, trying to get some things down in the shop to organize and get our room organized a little better, sweep and store stuff, and I was contacted by the sheriff's department last week. They did take care of moving two vehicles, one they towed and the other one they talked to the homeowner and got that moving, so it's uh, moving forward with that, so hopefully that'll look good.
Are we cutting on inventory, is that still moving along, stay?
No, it's presence here, we've, we've been doing, you know, they got hit.
Yeah.
Yep. Still on the agenda, so we'll get to it when we can.
How did the, what you do at the water test? Are they having a backup yet?
I tried to get ahold of somebody today and they haven't, I'm guessing with the holiday, you know, they took it Tuesday before Christmas and I'm assuming with the two holidays in there and um, as far as I know, they haven't been corrected yet, I'm gonna contact them again tomorrow and find out, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. JR?
Nothing for me.
Ashley?
Um, for the inventory, we did get something back from Steve Halfley. Um, at the end of the day, I didn't get a chance to look at it yet for the fire department, so we do have a list of that stuff, but there was no prices, so I'll talk to Lee about that. Excuse me. Um, the armory contract, I was made aware of earlier today that that is set to be renewed on 1/31 of this, of this year, so um, I'm not sure how you guys proceeded last time with that, but that they're currently paying 12,000 a year, um, so that's something that needs to be looked at this month yet before the end of the month. And otherwise, I have nothing else.
We need to kind of appoint somebody to do that, or?
I was gonna spearhead that and hopefully we'll see what we can do, work out with Mainville State. Uh, nothing on the sheriff's or city engineering tonight. Next time is the B.C. beautification tickets. So on the 21st, I went to the Trail County District Court. And um, we did agree and we, it was finalized there, that ticket number, the 2021002. Just making sure I have the right one. Excuse me, 2021001 was referred to them, but they have cleaned it up and taken care of it, so we did move to dismiss those charges.
Is that the log cabin over by the armory?
Uh, no, that would be the one. To the north. The log cabin would be the next property, which that one has been cleaned up and it's up for sale.
I think it might be sold, I got a call on it today, so.
So that one.
So that would be good.
Yes, so that one should be good, we shouldn't need it on there anymore. We kind of held off on these, but on 2021003, that would be the one to the east of the log cabin. And that one we held off on. And I, if you're in favor of that, it doesn't need to go with the sheriff and I think they've cleaned it up quite a bit. Whether or not you want to keep it open, just to make sure, or if you would like to close it.
I haven't looked at it real closely lately.
I mean, there's a few items.
It's kind of hard to tell.
Right. So would you prefer just to leave it open and we'll check on it?
I think that would be fine.
2003.
2021003. So just keep that open. Ticket number 2021004. The person did not show up to district court, there was two, two charges against the homeowner of that property. And they are, have a warrant with an $800 bond for them right now. And then once that is worked through, we'll see how that goes. 2021005, we started on the condemnation process, so I'm sure JR has started that, it does take some time for that. 2000, 2021007. That has been sold and we did close that one. 203 Fourth Street Southwest. We had referred that to the sheriff's department, we hadn't moved forward on that one. Um, do we want to hold off until the snow goes down a little again and then, oh, we'll start that process again?
Which one, which one was that Levi?
G, 2022001. Um, and then 2022002, that property is up for sale. And it's not Kubar, it's a different individual that does own that. But that was the one that Mike has been working with, so. I think we just keep that one open and see how that proceeds. Uh, 2022003. We had held off on that one because that individual was gone. Uh, I believe you guys did see a letter on it back in October. Uh, no changes have made, but if you would like to proceed, that would be one that we reached out to her, she sent a letter back, didn't come to see us. We made that apparent, if you want to move it on to the sheriff's department once spring comes.
I think I, I'm okay with holding off on it until spring and see what happens.
Okay. And then the last one is 218 Fourth Street Northeast. That's a sister property or mother property, whatever you want to call it, too. The other one that we did um, closed from last year, um, and that one was referred to the sheriff's department again, we held off to see how this court proceeding went on. And we'll see how things show up in the spring, if you're okay with that. And then we should have more after, we should be having a beautification meeting here next week on Monday. Any questions on those? Okay.
Fire this time here.
There's no update on the FEMA disaster for the whole business, next item would be the budget. Which I did send out to all of you on Friday or Thursday.
I don't remember which fund it was Levi, but you had, uh, you forgot to change the, I think you left it as 206 and it should have been 211, you had two of the same fund.
Let me open up, open it up.
On the top, not on the tab part, but like on the worksheet itself. Yeah, the tab was right, the worksheet was wrong.
I did have to move some funds around just to make everything work, so there was a few things that I had taken out. Based on what Dave had sent us for his proposal, so to make that work, I took out a couple other items to make it work. Was it 211?
Yes. I did, I changed it, but I wasn't sure if it changed.
Yeah, it changed.
Did it, okay. I didn't know how that worked.
So if you look at the general fund worksheet. There was a few items that the sales tax or rent, a few of those got changed. Um, I didn't have to take anything out of electrical to make it work. And that is with. That is with 6% for everybody. And with um, Dave's proposal of changing commission president to 66. And the rest of the commissioners to 4,800 with no insurance.
Mine's off. Mine's off.
Turn that off, too. Is there any other questions on that, or how would you like to move forward? And that did change the emergency fund, because that was going to be moved out.
And I moved that on Friday.
So would you like to move forward with this budget proposal, or how would we like to proceed?
Did you get a good deep look at it before? Did you get a chance to? Okay, I did get a chance to, even if I wanted to, if anybody else did. One question I do have is on the APDC side, when you split, when that funds come back, are they going to come out of debt retirement and sales tax? Where do they put the money, do you know?
So we get one lump sum comes into the general fund, and then we split it by a worksheet that we have for the, and we have it split out in percentages.
So what I'm saying is, when you didn't have it right the first few months, so they'll have to split some out of both of them, transfer out of both of those, I'm assuming that they put a certain amount into debt retirement and sales tax, right?
Yeah, but it all comes in the general fund first, and then it gets split out that way.
Right, but I'm saying if you've already sent it to sales tax, correct?
I, what I had took it out of was the 212 sales tax, the 35, 360, just took it all out of sales tax.
Okay.
Are we waiting on the approval of this amendment to move forward with moving some of these funds into the other ones?
That would be the start of the whole process, yeah. And also approval of what line items, so that Public Works knows what they have on
So you want to know if you want to vote on this now?
If you want to vote on this now, or what your thoughts are, how you want to proceed? Nicole?
I'm pretty comfortable.
Okay. Dave?
What I've seen, yes.
And that doesn't mean that we can't change things as we go. Mike?
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, I could look at it forever, so...
You could take four months to look at it.
I don't need that long to look at it, but it's only going to come out in the end.
Right.
We just got to get, we just have to get started on transferring and getting some stuff where it's supposed to be, and that's, that's kind of the first step, is getting the money where it's supposed to be, and getting funds back to where they're supposed to be.
So if, then I would just have an entertain a motion to approve the amended budget and the transfers. Chuck, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, first of all, I all hear parts and pieces, what are you voting for now, or will it try to get established?
It would be to the budget that you guys had seen at the special commission meeting, where it'd be approving that budget that's been amended, amended to what we had previously, we'd be going with the new budget.
All the things you went through the other day?
Absolutely, but what about all the things that we had, they haven't gone through yet that she's got to catch up on? Where does that add or enter the picture?
That doesn't unmiss part of it, that still gets...
That's a difference.
That will still get fixed, this is just saying how we're going to move forward with our estimated funds for this coming year, based on what we're doing. It also means that we're looking at allocating the 6% for the employee raises like we had before, we would need a separate resolution in order to do it, but the same thing with the rates, if we were going to increase those, that would have to be separate from the budget resolution, and I believe the same thing with the commission salaries would have to be a resolution also separate from that, it's just that we're approving that this budget would move forward.
Okay, well, at least I can hear you now, so, thank you, because it's frustrating to only hear you and maybe one other person out there.
I think some of our mics were shut off.
That could be...
Scratching.
I hate to interrupt, but I...
No, we want everybody, if you didn't hear, that means that the public didn't hear, so that are watching online, so...
Paul, make a motion to move forward with amended budget for 2023, done that 6% raise.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Dave, is there any other discussion on? If not, proceed to vote. Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And he asks for me. Motion carries. Thank you. So with that, are we sticking with the 6% for our employees?
I believe we should.
Okay, do I have a second? A motion is...
I'll move to second that.
Or moves?
I'll make a motion.
Dave moves, Mike seconds, for I have a 6% raise for the employees. Is there any other discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And he asks for me. Motion carries. Would we like to look at the rate increases, or do we want to hold off on that?
On electricals, guys, I want to, I want to hold off, I still have a few questions that I have on that, so...
Okay.
I'm not saying you can't enjoy other things.
The other one that we had proposed changing would be the sewer rates, and that would be changing from a dollar, or one cent per 100 cubic foot after 900 to 50 cents per 100 cubic foot, not after 900, just 50 cents per 100 cubic foot.
What was it from you said?
From one cent.
Per?
Per 100 cubic feet over 900 cubic feet. So if you use... Mole's, I would say on a family of four is going to be in that 8 to 1,200 cubic feet per month. So you would see a $4 to $6 increase on the sewer.
Levi, is there a way how we can make this bigger, so they can see it?
Um, yes, if you go to the...
Zoom in, zoom wide, put your...
Go down there.
But I mean, like, make it...
Go to view. I'll go to view. There should be a full screen.
Like the zoom part?
Well, that's how you'd zoom in, but there should be... Try going up in the browser itself. Right there. But I hope so.
I'm just trying to make sure it goes to me.
We can also hold off, too, it doesn't matter.
On the electrical side, I know I want to hold off, because I want to know exactly who'll react on that, I think we need to visit with Missouri.
Paul, what did you say?
On the electrical side, I want to hold off on any increase right now until we send visiting with the River Rock, so, we did have a meeting scheduled and it got postponed to whatever reasons.
We don't want to hold off too long on any of them, like I said, we are, especially on electrical, we are not, if you're on off-peak where they can...
In certain areas, there's no questions, but there's other questions, and I could be wrong, Jim, but I think there is.
We just got to keep on this, and we can't be putting months and months more work into it. Yes, Rick?
I thought you were going to raise up the garbage in electrical the last time to keep you in line with what's happening, so you could do improvements. Why would you hold off?
Well, on the garbage side, we didn't have to, there was enough that once you dived into it, I don't know where it came off, but if you look at what we're taking in and what we are spending or should be spending, should be pretty close, now that all depends on fuel rates, so, but we also, I believe the contract is coming up, so we'll look at that again a little bit more. Electrical, yes, based on what we had, we're looking at things that are off, but if I'm holding off for a little while, just know that we need to do this within the next month or two, to keep this budget in line.
What's going to change electrical, we only know one thing, it's not going to get cheaper.
Right, but I think it's more of what rate do we go to? It's not about what, I understand where Paul's at.
It's going to go up, but just how much?
How much? Are we going to go to nine cents, or are we going to go to eight and a half, 8.7, that's what we need to look at.
Didn't you have a figure on that, Levi?
I did, but that was, there again, I didn't have everything, I didn't have 12 months of data to go off of, I was only going off of seven months of electrical usage, so I didn't have a true number on it. So that one, I feel, you know, we could spend more time on to figure it out, so that we don't have a truer number, the gar, the sewer, no matter what we go up to, I mean, in reality, sewers doesn't make us money, so it's just a matter of moving to help subsidize some of it. And this would be, I would say, for the month of January, so you'd see it on the February bill for the sewer. And then hopefully doing this in stagnant, people will see a slow increase, I think would also be helpful, instead of one big lump sum change. So, do you guys like to make a motion for, to move the sewer rates, or?
I think we can move ahead with sewer rates.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second if you need it.
Dave makes a second to move the sewer rates from, on the per cubic rate, from one cent per 100 cubic foot after 900 to 50 cents per 100 cubic foot, with no, starting at zero, so... Is there any other discussion on that? Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave, or Paul?
Yes.
And he asked for me. Motion carries. On the employee evaluation, I think that's where we have the concerns. My suggestions to move forward with this is to take out the ratings, and put on, under the comments, the improvements or goals, and then on the other side, you would have good qualities or attributes. And the other thing that I would like to see us do is where it says, by the personnel commissioner and another commissioner, that's where supervisors, that would be supervisors, will be evaluated by each commissioner and approved by the commission as a whole, meaning each of you would need to turn in an employee evaluation, and then they would be put together for everybody to be signed off on.
What page are you on?
So you want to repeat, you're going to take away the rating, the rating you're going to take away?
Correct, just take away the rating, and under comments, you would have either improvements or goals that need to happen, and then attributes or good qualities that you are seeing.
Would you actually put that on there then?
Yes.
In comments, or you have that would be?
Just change comments to...
Attributes and...
Cool.
Goals. Anything else, Nicole? You've gone through a lot of those that you've seen in the past, would be important things to have, since you've done 100 of them in your life.
And then Paul, the other thing on the, where it says supervisor will be evaluated, be evaluated by the commission, so each individual commissioners would evaluate. I would like to get this done, so that then we can, you guys can take this and do it before the next commission meeting, because this would determine the supervisors' raises for next year.
For the comments to attributes or goals, who would complete that portion, then?
You, each individual commissioner.
Is there somewhere where the employee can put in their own comments or anything? Is there somewhere where the employee can put in their own comments or anything?
It's not necessarily, I mean, they could put in a written one, but it's not necessarily in there, no. And it's not, you know, the final one would be put together and discussed as a whole as a commission. It's almost school boards do it. Is that each commissioner, or each school board member evaluates, super tenants generally at large, and then it is all voted on at the end.
With no reading?
Uh, no, there's a reading at the...
There is a reading almost.
Or they go, no, I don't know if there is a reading, I think it just depends.
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
It's jumping around here, but we're all looking for the same thing, good reports on everybody, 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 but say we have a, a problem where somebody's gotta get addressed, somebody's gotta get sat down and said, "No longer do you do that." Is it still able to put something in their file, or after the last meeting, and we had a resent, which I don't understand at all? If somebody put something in a file, it should be in a file, or don't we have any way of bringing justice around?
No, I believe that you'd still be able to do that. The only thing that changed was from a written reprimand to a verbal reprimand.
There's another section in the Policy, I know, two, page twenty-nine and thirty, that deals with reprimands, discipline.
And then about where it's, that's why I asked.
So there, so it is covered in here under verbal reprimands. It does say what they do are written, and if they're given the suspension and dismissal and everything, it's all included in here.
Does it really hold to a person any good on the commission that gives somebody a reprimand, and then the next day it gets rescinded? And that, that's behind us, it's been voted on, and that can die of, yeah, but there is time and place, if you don't believe me, just go off crystal sugar. They have no problem laying off a hundred thousand dollar worker if he doesn't do what he's supposed to be doing.
And I, you know, and I truly believe that if, you know, it shouldn't be just the personnel commissioner that would write a reprimand. If any other commissioner, being that they're dealing with them on a day-to-day basis on different issues, they should be able to write the reprimands as they see fit also. It's just a matter of working it through everybody, so that everybody is aware of it.
Just, just to clarify, how, how do you wanna do a verbal? You know, 'cause you talked about some paperwork saying if you were given a verbal?
No, I've never been...
No, but what I'm saying is, is, is if you were giving, if we gave someone one...
I was just saying, if you, maybe to track it, either, either track it on a spreadsheet, or you write up a slip, a paper that says verbal, and then each party signs it, so they know that, yes, this was your verbal warning. That way it's documented somehow, that's all I was saying.
And I think it should be...
But Paul, you check around, most verbal ones are given at the meeting. So you've already got a verbal warning, you don't do anything wrong. It's, you write people up after that.
So they don't do verbal, just if you have a problem with somebody, you can go through there?
A verbal is also sometimes known, and sometimes it isn't, it all depends. I mean, if you look at it, it says, it's, a verbal is just less severe, and intended an influence to improve performance. Where written is more serious, this is for unacceptable, or if the verbal was unsuccessful.
'Cause I view a verbal, a verbal as something that could be given at any time, whether it's at a meeting, or, or whatever, you know, just so they're made aware of it. So it's documented that they're made aware of it, that this, that this is a verbal.
Right, but as we discussed at the last meeting, apparently, we need to have something in the file, 'cause not always times are the verbal reprimands. So whether...
And it says right in there, verbal reprimand should be documented in the employee's personnel file.
Right.
So that's where, so, we need to have a, have a form of some sort saying, so that, uh...
I don't even think we need a form, I think all you need to do is just send a email saying that this Ashley has been notified of a verbal reprimand for X cause by Paul, and to be, this is to be placed in the personnel file.
And I just wanna clarify how we're gonna do that, how we're gonna document it. I think that way, whether it's an email, whether it's...
Whether it's an email, or you take it in and you ask for the staff to put it in there? I don't think we need any official form or anything, it's just, it's kept in that file. Whether you ask, you send an email asking Ashley or the office staff to put it in there, or whether, it's still getting put in, that's the key. If we make this too complicated, I think it won't be done.
I just wanna know, so there's something, we have an issue someplace down the road, with somebody else?
Yep.
That's kind of been hashed over in the past, and they don't wanna go again, when the next... And then are there, are there, on, on this manual, or the, or the handbook, there's supposed to be copies of that in their file that they've reviewed that and signed off on it? Is there copies of that in their file, everybody's file? So everybody has signed off, if they've read these?
And David doesn't?
Most, yeah, there's a shade on the back.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I haven't done.
They, I know that mine, Sarah's, Julie's, I'll have to check on, on the public works.
And being it's in the handbook, we should make sure that it is, gets...
And it should be, every time that we update the policy, it needs to be done. So if we update this tonight, everybody should be given a copy of it and signed and put back in.
Highlighted anything that's changed. That's one thing. And then on, on, uh, I'm not sure which page it is, mileage, do we, you have a mileage date in there as of the eighteenth? Is there a way we can do that, so that just kind of follows the general, you know, maybe what the state does, the county does?
I thought we had the state in there, I thought we changed that last time.
If you had a date in there as of a certain date, I don't know if that makes a difference or not, it's kind of...
Page during, Paul?
Kind of confusing.
Should be, should be under the state rate.
Thirty-seven, but...
What I thought it was supposed to be, thirty-seven, you said?
No, depends on what, I've just found, you know, that the ones that I was looking at on, on the computer were different than what you have here, so... So I'm not exactly sure what it's on.
Twenty-six.
What's it?
Page twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. That's actually what I have, it was twenty-six, so that's right, but I know there was one that was different, so I need to do something.
Can you change it to current, like, current state rate and not have the date in there? 'Cause yeah, that rate is way off.
Right, that's, that's the only other question, is do we need, do we need that date in there? Or do you just, you know, it's, otherwise you could be changing it every time you look at it.
I thought you put that in there last time.
Yeah, I thought I changed it, but...
I thought you changed that, to state that current rate.
Yeah.
As opposed to a date.
I must have missed it, I'm sorry, is that, 'cause I thought we had agreed, I thought you guys had agreed on that.
I remember that.
Yeah, I thought you guys had agreed on that last time, so that change just got missed, so I'll make sure it gets changed.
The date just, it's taken out.
Right.
Well, I think what it should say is employees' mileage at the current state rate for in-state travel and follow federal mileage rate for out-of-state travel.
Yes.
Same thing with meals. In-state would be under the North Dakota state rate, and out-of-state would be follow the federal guideline. Same thing with lodging.
You just don't need a date in there?
You wouldn't even need a date in there, no.
That, that was the point, is that we need to get the date out of there.
So all, you could even condense it down and say, mileage, meals, and lodging shall be set. The lounge should be used by state rate for in-state travel, and out-of-state rates are based off the federal rates. And then, instead of doing this every year, under, on page twenty-three, under holidays, we should probably have New Year's Eve, close at noon, and Christmas Eve, close at noon. Twenty-three. So that way you can get published if it's gotten missed. 'Cause usually cold more on top of it, getting a reminder when it's supposed to be in the paper.
Put Juneteenth where it's supposed to be too. I'm always doing that.
And then, it, it says in the policy, if it falls on a Saturday, we proceeding Friday, and it falls on a Sunday, we recognize it on Monday. So then there shouldn't be any questions as we move forward.
New Year's Eve isn't at noon also, right?
Correct. Any other changes?
Yeah, I'm gonna be the dead horse on this, on this, uh, reporting of fraud and things like that. I know that we, I know that a lot of it gets reported to the auditor, but I know last time you talked about this, I had talked about that there's really nothing specifically in there for the auditors committing fraud, and also even if there's fraud being committed by commissioners, there's really no... There's really nothing in there to really...
What page?
Well, I, I guess I find under thirty-seven is the closest I can find it.
Should we send the state, contact the city auditor, commission president, or commissioner?
Well, I, I'm not exactly sure what we, what we should do with, you know, 'cause I, I just want something clear and defined, because I did talk to John about this, and John said there is nothing in there specifically, specifically that says what I should do as an employee if the auditor's committing fraud. Because, because in almost every one of these, the auditor is the first person you go to when there's fraud being committed, and then the city commission, you know, chair, and so on and so forth, but, but if, uh, if I'm an employee and I suspect the auditor or the chair are committing fraud, obviously, I'm not gonna go to them. And I know that the last time was made well, they said, "Well, we'd go, we'd go to this person or that person." Well, I'd rather see that written specifically, that if an employee, I'd like to have a paragraph in there specifically saying what to do if an employee sees that there's fraud being committed by a commissioner, by the auditor, you know, 'cause right now, you know, if there's an employee doing it, or a vendor, or anything like that, it's being reported to the auditor. But I just don't see it in there, and I sent this exact same page to John, and John said he doesn't either. So, you know, he can maybe clarify it from the legal side more than I can, but that was my biggest thing was, is that there's no specific direction. I don't know if JR could chime in on that, if there's, just to make it so there's no gray area for, that's me like me.
Yeah, just to eliminate that, I'd include a sentence or two, just saying that if the fraud is involving the auditor, or the commission president, as that's drafted, that speak to someone else, maybe the other commission members.
Right, or attorney, or whatever.
Or the attorney, right. The last call.
Because if there's an issue with the city attorney, we aren't talking to the auditor and the president.
Yeah.
So basically something that says, okay, if I suspect there's something going on, I know who to go talk to. Maybe, it might be the city attorney, it might be another commissioner.
Yeah, I was like, just throw a line in there saying that.
Yeah, and that can be as simple as that, just, there's no gray area of ours, who am I, who am I supposed to talk to?
And that's just on that one paragraph, reporting procedures.
Mm-hmm.
So it could be contact the city auditor immediately, or the commission president, or the commissioners, or the attorney.
Yep, as applicable, I mean, yep, yep.
Does that sound good for everybody? Okay, any other changes? If not, do I have a motion to approve the... We've never done anything on it that it is in there. City or in columns? Most of them, when I've looked at it, I just make sure there's no extra charges over there. It's kind of hard to, I'd hate to say we're, we use fifty, fifty minutes of personal and... Wow, that'd be tough to do. I just don't get extra charges. So is there a motion to approve the changes for the employee handbook?
Make the motion.
Is there a second? And Ashley, you have all those changes?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
So you're just wanting to make the changes, or not, if I could find? I'm not one to vote.
Shall I see everything?
Correct.
Right.
Changes for final approval.
'Cause we can say, 'cause we can say we want this, but then when it gets translated, it might not be exactly what we wanted, so...
No, it's for these changes.
Changes, I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any ask for me? So Ashley, when you have the...
Send it out to all of you.
Send it out to all of, and then send me a separate copy of this, and I will send it out to all the commissioners for the two evaluations that everybody will be...
And then highlight the changes on that, it's different than the...
That way we won't forget the wording after.
I, I wanted to be specific, that, that if the auditor or your commissioners commit, just come to become any thought, who is, who they're supposed to go to.
Um, just a few questions, I wanna go to work on this lease agreement with Mayville State.
We, we should have changed, I think we forgot about it, uh, on the chain of command, we should, we should have changed too, because right now, you have the personnel portfolio, and on the chain of command, we shouldn't have that. So I don't know if we have to change that, or if we find somebody else that takes that portfolio.
I think it's just if, if it's separate, that would be the chain of command, if it's not, then it is way...
That's, everybody sees it, I guess, I don't necessarily see it that way, but...
Why shouldn't he, Paul?
Huh?
Why shouldn't he?
What's that?
Why shouldn't he have the personnel portfolio?
Well, just because the way the chain of command, it shows that there's somebody else underneath him with the portfolio, so...
What difference does that make?
But it was only done that way because the one commissioner before, or one commission president before didn't want to deal with that portfolio. But before that, it had been that way for how long?
Any board I ever served under, that's the way it was.
And I believe, you know, the way that we're doing the evaluations should clear that up.
Well, I was just looking at the chain of command side.
Well, but also think of, this chain of command only deals with this book. 'Cause now if you're saying if there's an electrical issue, does that mean it goes to the commission president first and then through? Because that's the way that would be read here, where it should be whoever holds the electrical portfolio and then up through. Where it should be whoever holds the electrical portfolio, and then up through. On the lease agreement, is there anything that you guys have concerns? Or anything that I should be aware of, that you'd like taken care of, changed? Okay?
Increase.
Increase? Is there any other? Anything from the audience tonight? Yes, Rick?
I'm just wondering, this is for Ashley, is that helping you now with the work on that other stuff? And we can shut your doors? I know it's, you're not going to sell, but do you find it beneficial to do?
It, well, we've had some short weeks, so it's been hard, but yeah, the days that I am able to shut it, and I just focus on that, it, it has, so it's made a big difference, so.
That's good.
I got a question, at the last meeting, and she probably presented it to you people, she was supposed to have a bank statement from the bank reconcile with the checkbook, did that happen? It was brought up at the last meeting, this is what we were expecting, really?
No, because we knew it wasn't going to get done in this meeting, but we should have it by the next meeting. Because she didn't get it till today, so she didn't have?
Right.
We knew that, yes.
And who is the water Commissioner?
The water?
Nicole.
Nicole.
Any other question? The one thing I forgot to bring up, I was approached by a couple individuals on Caledonia, across from the high school. We now have another business that has opened up on that side. A few years ago, apparently the school had asked for that street to have no parking on the south side of Caledonia for that block. They're asking now that there is a business there, which is a daycare, to have that, no parking taken out.
I'm going to ask the people that know everything here, Mike and Dave, why that was.
I have no idea.
Was that before your time? I always wondered why they did that, do you know Jim? Is there a reason why they, does the school want that closed, or?
I'm guessing because the residents voiced their opinion, that their school, the street, there was always people parked in front of houses, that, all those blocks?
That makes sense.
It's been the residents that have come forward and said, you know?
And right now, there's really only one resident there that's?
So that's, that's what I remember.
Yeah, if you open it up, then all you're going to have is probably school kids parking there, so.
Did you? Yeah, that's what's going to happen.
Yeah.
So are you going to come?
So would you rather change it to limited parking? Instead of no parking? Thirty-minute parking or something like that?
Is that all day, anyway? They want no parking all day?
No, there is no parking.
There is no parking, I think it's during, mostly during school hours.
But that, would that work for them, do you know?
Well, I don't know, but are you okay with it getting changed? That's my question, are you okay with me working with them to get a change? And Jim?
Can they do an hour's, you know, parking for a half hour, an hour, like the other daycares?
I have no problem with period.
Now, the sign over here says parking fifteen-minute parking or something?
I have no problem with them parking there, period, but I just don't, if they're, if they want parking there because of their business?
I know there will be kids that would park at the ice.
We all know that, so.
I just want to know if you're okay with me moving forward with it, if there'd be any issues?
Yeah, I guess we have to talk to them.
I think pursue it and see what the questions are, see what they're looking for, see what the neighbors, if you only got one there? It's just that one block here.
Just the one block, yeah. And one resident has other parking on the other side, and the other resident, I don't, only lives there during the summer months, mostly. Do I have a motion to adjourn then?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
You passed the budget, right?
Correct.
And the working employees get a six percent raise increase, correct?
Correct.
What happened with the Commissioners?
That hasn't been approved or changed yet.
Is that what we looked at, though?
Yes. Because we have to do a resolution for that. Which I'll, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, Doc.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dave, second to my mic, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then meeting adjourned.